I restored my glasses.
Ready?
Yes.
I probably set her down when I brought. I'm trying to work at my desk.
I just found out I need glasses.
I would ask.
Nope.
And me. No. Alright, perfect. Yeah. Reveal approval of the minutes of November 3rd.
Second.
Multiple seconds. Let me throw the discussion. Seeing none, all those with favor. Members reports. Sorry, that's not here. What's our branch? Nothing for myself. We'll move right to the town members report.
Well, let's see. Maybe this whole risk management was here yesterday morning. Did a building inspection, reviewed some of our policies, paperwork and whatnot. We fared very well. Also coming out of that visit was the fact that we now qualify for the next ring of benefits in terms of a discount on our workers' comp. So we're going to be jumping from a seven and a half to ten percent discount starting January 1st. So a good thing there that will help especially departments like fires. I love works when we come to that.
Is that because of lack of incident or reported incidents?
No, we participate in workers' compensation program. And we were always just short of a wellness program. Well, as long as we offer health benefits through main municipal, they coordinate that with educational materials and whatnot. They qualify. So it doesn't require that gym membership that we thought it did. Nomination papers will be available starting next Wednesday. There's a bunch of seats open. You have dressed and stop on it after that. Spirit of America Town Report dedication. Please forward any of the names that you have. I've got three A things so far. Next Thursday and Friday, we're close to Thanksgiving. Cemetery Committee making more good progress. They finished up the total of cemeteries and they're working on budget development. Both department and and with long-term objectives in terms of the bigger projects that are needed in the cemetery. So really good progress. More progress from the Cemetery Committee has seen, at least in my time. And they're going to get back together again on December 2nd. Hope to finalize that budget proposal to you. Their proposal will be the establishment of a reserve account utilizing in part interest earned on the cemetery trust, which can only be used on cemeteries, which is built and built and built. And they're asking for that to move over so that they can complete some substance at work in the cemetery. So we'll have more on that. The two lampposts in between Catar and Cataris and the old restaurant have been installed. They look very nice. It took a lot longer in terms of supply and install. Still the electrical issues down there that are fully fixed, but we're safely operating now. And you've got pictures on the backside of your report. So those are best that I could possibly do. Taxes are past due. If you don't pay taxes and sewer jobs by December 31st. Friendly reminding of the town report. The library trustees have decided that they're going to support Waste Management's comp posting program that we learned about a month or so ago. They want to serve as a center of information, meeting point, a training location, if that's of interest to Waste Management in cooperation with DEP and UMF. So they also told us that the program survey information that they were telling us about, that's going to come out a little bit more delayed than they had thought mid-January. So we'll be sharing updates with you as that moves along. The holiday stroll, we had a meeting just before this. We had a good number of people show up to help us with that. And if that comes together, the way we were talking this afternoon, it's going to be a great event. So either snow or sun, no rain makes that perfect. And we've also added a house and business decorating contest, hundred dollar prizes for the winners there. And if you'd like, it's townwide, not just main corridor. If you'd like to be considered, just call the office or message us on Facebook and we'll add you to the list and we'll have a map so that folks will be able to travel town and see those. And then Waste Management, so is the question of the holidays. It will only be closed on Thursday. Combat Gate and Waste Management will be closed next Thursday, Thanksgiving. It will remain unchanged for Friday and Saturday. Some late in the day notes. Thank you to Waste Management. They'll be donating all of our wreaths. It will go from the Historical Society to Mechanic Street for the holidays. We've had more beaver problems in town. This time down to Martin Street and the large cross over. Public Works is fully staffed. Write that down. Thank you for your support in terms of taking care of their department, but we are not where we thought we were going to be in terms of staffing going into winter. So very encouraging there. We've got some young folks, some experienced folks, but a good staff altogether. And then in follow-up to the conversation at the last meeting with regards to the honest community and horseman work, I reached out to four or five of the communities from Roost to County to Unity. And they're all finding the same thing. There's just nothing that anybody can do. They've had meetings. They've had one-on-one discussions with them. Everybody seems willing, but then nothing ever comes through. So this is not unique to us. Mercer is something that's shared by all of these communities. And it's, you know, just a level of traditionalism within that community. So one person that I was talking to, administrator of North, said, no, we're the only way that they've seen any change in any other jurisdictions through state law. And so unfortunately, it might take a couple accidents or whatnot in order to generate that, but we've seen some already throughout the regions. And so we'll continue to keep an eye on it. We've now got introduced to a good group of folks to see what might be productive or not productive and working with that community. But yeah. No changes there. That's where we're at.
It's good. Alright. Discussion action on November 17th, January 22.
The amount of $21,695.04.
201785.
201785.04.
Oh, second. Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Dear Go-Engineer.
That is a large lump sum on the senior report problem.
What's CAI Technologies?
That is our tax management service. And that's our annual payment. That's for the online posted tax and updates.
And TikTok?
TikTok is, it's just the hundred and fifty. That's, we had an extra stump round on the corner of our Peter Parks. There was a stump there. I asked him what the plus up would be if we had that taken out and we had those. And so we added that on. Because it'll take just a little bit of time in the spring and we're going to work for the name of it. Pick up a decorative tree. So back over here, just add a little bit more.
What is the meaning was an equalization consultants? What's that?
That's Dawn, the assessing agent.
Seeing none, all those with favor. Discussion action on airport warrants, number 11.
Motion to approve warrant, airport warrant number 11, the amount of $47,8292.
I'll second that.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none.
I have a question. Also, we had to get things from two different places for the generator pen.
We're still waiting on that. That's we're hoping to get out at least all the underground stuff done in the next couple of weeks. And in that way, final generator arrival.
One out there looks like it should be used with coal. Like a choo-choo train.
Okay. Discussion action on November 17th.
Motion that we approve the sewer commitment, the amount of $17,801.95.
I'll second that. Motion the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those with favor. Is everybody public comment? Anybody? Public comment? Okay.
Seeing no one.
I just would like to retouch on what we talked about the last time. And if you're not willing to make a decision as a board, maybe you could put it back to the vote of the town at town meeting with no commitments. I mean, I mean, not, uh, no. But with no restrictions.
No stipulations.
No stipulations, no restrictions. That way there, straight up vote with no restrictions. And that was there. If you don't feel comfortable, you know. It's not on your show.
Okay. I can see the title, but I think we will make the decision here. We'll discuss again, but thank you.
Things going okay with the internet?
No changes since I sent the last update. I'll be sure. You have to slow down. Then it's better. Then it's slower.
No, no. Just like the internet, right? Just like the internet.
Hasn't sped up at all.
Okay. No other public comment? Discussion action on appointments.
There is one appointment as a result of Haven Fleming's resignation from the board of directors at school department. There are two applications before you. The first was Samantha Delory and the second for Morgan McCloud. Morgan is in attendance this evening. I'm going to say that's probably one of the best volunteer applications I think I've ever seen. So I think.
Is that a nomination?
Well, I didn't want to make the nomination. I was going to talk about the board, so. So, yeah. Yeah, certainly both qualified. She's here and it's very well called out. Certainly both are qualified.
I'll make a motion if we nominate Morgan Cloud.
Sounds like school board.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion?
So will we base it just attendance or is that, I just want to make sure I understand, like, do we base it, like, what made us come to that one?
Well, if you read through what she wrote down for myself, it would
Okay. I just want to make sure.
So I like the fact that it's a complete application. It's above and beyond what the minimum application would require.
She's here and obviously interested, so.
And, you know, if it was one person, it'd be a lot easier, but it's smaller.
Can you, what is, are we allowed to ask a question?
Yeah.
What is medical micro solutions?
It's a, so it's an IT firm. So I'm a network administrator, you know, by, you know, engineering by trade. Over the last 12 years, I've done private, but prior to that, I was working in education for 15 years.
Okay. So it's still the same line of work, you know, network engineer by trade.
Seeing none, all those with favor. Thank you. Any other votes?
I see my appointment. Yeah, I unfortunately didn't have this ready for you to sign, which I'd like you to sign because I know the school department is anxiously awaiting an appointment. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to run this off and ask Sharon if she would go to the printer and grab it and swear Morgan. Also, this appointment expires at town meeting 2022. So if you are interested in running again, you want to please nominate your papers after next Wednesday.
You said, Ron.
Giddy up.
And we'll leave both signatures around here when we start. Sorry about that.
You can stay, Joe.
Yeah, she'll just bring it back to you. She just got moved.
Alright. Excellent. Discussion action regarding airport operations and finances.
I regret to apologize. I wasn't able to make out the airport as I request everyone else.
Anybody else?
I just slacker.
Am I the only one that went?
I've been there a hundred times.
When was the last time though that anybody went?
I went flying, but I mean, I was flying, moving off. I wasn't paying attention. Alright, so it's a lot of meetings and discussions about the airport. Possible build-out of terminal building and then pivoted into really the operational stats of the airport finances surrounding that. And so what we asked the board coming out of that was to kind of give us an update on the project. So thank you to Peter for getting this stuff together. It was kind of a rush, a short weekend and whatnot, but it happened. So this is just going to kind of give you an overview of where we're at as of today. And for the public, if you have questions, I'll ask that you hold them until the end and the board will lay them on the slide if that works. So to give you an overview of the facility, we have 57 hangars at the airport. Seven of them are considered double just due to the size of the hangar. We also have a maintenance garage, which is a 40 by 40, almost 20 years old. It's got two bays. Open layout on the interior, newly automated doors. They've got overhead heat and it's got electricity in the building. The terminal building is 26 by 24. That is an aged building. That's going to also attach eight by eight storage on the back that shows the generator that is not on the main at present time. First floor has your restroom and the sitting area, kitchen. And the second floor is really just the administration of office space that could be converted for other uses. The other thing that we have out there that is a significant revenue source for us is a fuel farm, which in the last decade, I believe, if, has been converted to credit cards. So that it's a 24-hour service for folks coming through. We offer two types of fuel. They are 100 lowland and then the non ethanol. We've got two runways as you walk, as you drive in on Airport Road, really the one that runs left to right, Waste Management to Child Road is 1533, about 4,000 feet long. And then running from you straight ahead to Sandy River Road is 321, again, about the same length. That straight ahead is our crosswind runway, subject to funding being revoked by the federal government and DOT due to a lack of wind data and demand is what they're, where they're at right now. So at this point, every project that relates to 321 has been pushed out because FA is not willing to support that. So it's going to take additional data collection from them in order to justify any expense on that. That is also the runway that is used by state lease and other agencies for the EVAC trains. I think I went out there this week. Lindsay and I saw him today zooming around. But the maintenance of that also allows for the airport about $6,000 a year in extra revenue related to that. Last year was naturally some of the COVID, all those trains were postponed. So you have 28-based aircraft at the airport. Those are the planes that pay excise tax that actually live here, sleep here. We have aircraft operations, which is up or down activity. If you go up and down right quick, that's going to be two. We're averaging 27 per day according to data in 2019. It's tough to kind of give you the baseline just because of the involvement of COVID. Naturally, that had an impact on our expenses, but also our revenues. And then activities, employment change in terms of where people were going. On average, we're 70% local aviation and 30% of folks coming in and out are not from central name. So here are airport source revenues. These are revenues that we see come through the town or through the airport fund that we wouldn't see otherwise if not for the airport. So primary funding source out there is our hangar lease fee. $45 a month on a single hangar. And you've heard of double hangars. And that's based off the square footage of hangars out there. So that's 34,000, 35,000. Your airplane excise tax in 2020, 3,500. Runway rental, that was down that year. The period, like tie-down, so it's, you know, out on the apron and really broke down. And that's occasional, but if there's a lack of available hangar space, then we see that. And then things that come into the general from the town's general fund are your real estate taxes. And that's about $14,000. There are no businesses that are active out there that are required to pay personal property tax. So there's nothing there. Even if we did have a mechanic, you'd be hard pressed because all of the tools and things like that would be exempt from personal property. Here's just a chart with your runway rental. You can see a 6,000 is pretty much the average minimum with the exception of 2020. And we're at that and above this year. Your airplane excise tax, we lost a big one after the airport. They've sold one of their airplanes and the excise tax on that's a little over $1,000 a year. So when you're only talking 3,000, it's a, it's a pretty good hit in terms of that. And then we get on to a big contributor to the profitability of the airport and that being fuel sales. And you can see from 2016 right to 2021, we've continued to watch the consumption of fuel stored at the airport. Largely attributed to non-alcohol gas being available more commonly along route two. So it used to be that folks would take a four-mile drive up to the airport to get this momentum fuel. And now you can get it in a Lucille, you can get it at a tri-pon, you can just get it in a one more place. And so that used to provide us a great opportunity. And with every bit of, every gallon that we're selling, there's margin. And so you can see here, the top two lines are 100 lowland and are 91 actually. The fight, it's up and down, up and down. And truth be told, the margin here is actually attributed to the 100 lowland decrease, which is the primary aviation fuel, if you will. And the margins are relatively consistent in terms of cost of goods sold. First of all, we're actually selling. So that's all good business, but the fact of the matter is is our fuel sales are down. And that affects our profit. So we're profiting over, profiting over 26,000 in 2016 and we're about 15,000 now. So we lose $10,000 in terms of the revenues is really what control that we have. Our margins are relatively the same. We try to remain competitive. We have to compete with airports like Bethel that subsidize, but then you don't want to go and be on top of it and things either. And so one of the conversations that we've had is, I mean, you can trigger up the price, but then it's just to increase your margin, but are you going to even take your actual name? And we haven't really played with that because the vast majority of what we sell is to the pilots of the air. And so it's assumed that it's to them. And so we wanted to remain competitive. And we've also had folks that have come down from Bradyville and Highball. All those things have been helpful, but needless to say, the profitability related to fuel sales has hurt the airport's financial position just because we're not making that margin. This is the big, this is the other end of it, the expense, payroll expense. We have had two employees out there, we've had three employees, we've been down to one, up to two, and we're back now down to one. But in 2019, we started to bill 15% of finance time here at the office because a lot of the administrative tasks, the customer on the handle on site aren't handled. They're handled here. So Peter handles contract administration. He handles all of the lease paperwork, the hangar fees, the tie-down building, all of that's handled here. And so it's only appropriate that we would attribute some of his costs to the airport. And so that's 50% there. That's also consistent with billing to sewer fund. A portion of his time is built to the sewer fund as well. So needless to say, payroll expenses have risen. By that, we've also restructured the position at the airport with the employee that's out there that oversees the entire facility. And so it has seen that uptick in terms of the payroll. We have cost savings out there, you know, the employees not drawing health insurance and other things like that, which is a huge change. That would drive this lineup, you know, by 50% if they were, you know, single and individual health benefits are offered. So you know, it looks like a big jump, but it's really not for what, what's required out there. So where are we going? We're trying to get to the bottom line. In order to do that, the airport's different because we get these large sums of money that come in from the federal government. And we're paying out on the projects and those don't always line up. So for the purposes of looking at the operation, we pulled all of that out. None of these big projects, the inflow and the outflow are going to be included. Any of the abnormal influxes, whether it's an equipment purchase, the obstruction claim, the timber sales that we saw, we pulled that out just for the purposes of looking at the project. And then also for 2021, keep in mind, we only included data through November 10th. But, so we tried to keep it stable in terms of operation review as we go. And we'll add some of that back in as we go. So here's, here's where it is. If the town doesn't, the town contributes $22,200 per year to the operating expense of the airport. The town also puts $10,000 into a reserve account. That's not fact. I think that money is actually held in the town funds. This is just the 22,200. So we were, we've had a 50,000 swing is what it amounts to. Revenues are declining, costs are going up. And you can see that here, the red line on the top, that's when the town support. That's that 22,000 and the blue line showing the decline. Without, with, out the town support is the blue line. And so it's, everything's going in the wrong direction for us out there. Where does that come? It comes right back into your revenues and expenses. What is included that we kept in there because it is a maintenance model thing is crack ceiling. So we had a year and a half of crack ceiling project out there just to patch things together on the inside of the airport, if you will. And so if we move that out, that's going to get you to the dotted red line. And that's the total expense of our crack ceiling. So it's a slight increase in your expense, which is what you would expect over time, a slight increase in your expense. The problem is the green line. Again, we peaked in 2019. We tanked in 2020 largely attributed to COVID, but it's not moving. That line's not moving back up in the way that we would normally expect it to. So we're driving again. The costs are up, your revenues are down, and we're just driving the operational gap. Mind you, this doesn't exclude the in and out of fuel. We didn't do that. The cost of fuel doesn't include the federal grants or the wood sales. This is your regular operational expectation. The fuel sales have been that large contributor to the downward trend. It's shrunk the margin and that affects our bottom line. We, we, we may, we do need to consider our margins, our pricing structure, see if we can create a more competitive position. But I don't expect that it will shift in really one way or another. We might sell less gallons and make the same amount, but that's really not in favor of encouraging activity at the airport. Payroll, our labor costs continue to rise. As I mentioned back in 2019, administrative costs were not born by the airport. That's when we built them in. So 50% of finance gets built in. None of my wage and time is the airport administrator does get built in. So that's all just absorbed by the administration department. And then in 2020, 2021, we also incurred some incremental expenses that were made as just a result of the COVID funds that have come in over time with the airport. So that's the AWAS upgrade that Lifeflight helped us set up. That was $3,000. That was something we've always wanted and we spent the money just because we had the revenue coming in from the feds. That's not accounted for in here. And then we had a large plower repair, which is something that we would have had to have done. But we weren't able to do it at the time because of the funds. So those are all incremental expenses and we left those smaller ones in there, if you will, in three and five thousand bucks. Not small, but it's small in the grand scheme of things. Because you have to be able to afford those over a five or six-year period.
Is that the same thing with the generator as well?
Yeah. So the generator, we haven't paid for it because we haven't got it. We paid a thousand out. And then that has been offset, it will be offset by some of that $30,000 received from the rescue plan money. And then that has been offset, it will be offset by um some of that thirty thousand dollars received from the rescue plan money. Uh so we're in the upside down model here, not where we want to be, um but. Really, where are we? That was a doom and gloom picture. Without it, the airport over the period of the six years operated a loss of nineteen. That's without the town's support, that's without the town saying, you know, we support the airport, the activity, the involvement that it brings to our community. You add that money in and you're just going to be better for it. We pulled the wood sale money out, so there was seventy six thousand dollars from the timber sales out there. We pulled that up because it's a one time expense, but in reality, it's helping the airport, it's in their fund and it can help to soften some of these harder years. We add that back in and in that position of the airport over six years is about sixty thousand up. So not terrible, it's not going to reverse the trend right quick, but it helps to soften those harder years. And then you add in the wood sale and the town support, which is the real picture right now, and the airport's up one hundred and seventy one forty six. All right. So that's where it's at, and then it's a matter of really, uh from my perspective, it's user fees. It's community support, it's other community support, uh it's a matter of bridging that gap between the revenues and expenses. Looking for questions, we can comment.
I'll tell you one thing that I definitely noticed, and it was seeing all the stuff that Roland does out there. I mean, I saw, you know, on your slides that payroll's part of the most significant of the expenses, honestly, and like. Even me, and I told him when I said it, like, I'm the first one to say when he stops spending money out there, but like. He's super underpaid for what he does, I mean, like, guys on the call seven days a week and he literally is carpenter, he's doing. The job like for people out there, we pay them, I mean, this is recorded, so I'm not going to say we're paying them, but like. It's not enough for what he's doing out there, it's kind of, I mean. He shows us the windows he's putting in, the insulation he's putting in someplace else, the hydroxide he's fixing fixing on something else and that, like, he's called in like all these other days and it's like. If he leaves, because honestly, like, knowing what that guy did, all I'm thinking in the back of my head is like, how do I get a lynch sweatshirt on this guy? Because I'd like to steal him, because I'm going to pay him twenty grand more and he'll work half as much. We can't hire someone to come in and do all the stuff that he does and it's going to be at a significant inflated cost, so like. If he leaves, he's like a unicorn, what are we going to do if that guy leaves, because. We're not going to be able to get all those jobs done on that operating budget that we have right now, that's not going to happen, nobody is going to do that much work for that. Like, so that for me, like, if this is already like a big problem for us from like a payroll standpoint, he's giving us a giant gift because like. Doing so much more than what someone should be doing for the how much we're paying him, like, that's. We should be, oh, I found Mr. Roland, like, that's, I was blown away by how much he does out there, that was a bit eye opening for all the hat sealers. For how much we pay him and how many days he's there, that was.
Nice, so I didn't realize you did all that.
Uh, yeah. What was for him, I kind of feel a little guilty for us for, especially having to do all those things, but that was.
He did. She's absolutely right. He does an awesome job, and not only does he do all those things, he does all of those things very well. Really does, he's really accountable. Do you have a question? You said there's twenty eight base airplanes, but there's fifty seven hangers. So there's a number of empty hangers?
There are either a number of empty hangers or there are a number of folks that are claiming this is their home base.
How do we fix that?
How do we fix that? That's not true.
Right, so my information comes from FAA, which then matched what I have for excise tax pay. And we talked about that briefly actually today, uh Lindsay came up with Roland and I. Uh and I think we're legitimately looking, uh we're going to need to do interior inspections, we're going to have to. Uh for use of the facility uh and for what we have for aircraft there. Because those numbers, I mean, we said we had a hangar problem, but I got fifty percent capacity as far as my my base.
I think most of the hangars are full and with base data.
Oh, sorry, Ken, I thought you were gonna. Well, I was curious if there was anything in the lease that stipulates that if they have a plane there more the next number of days or whatever. That this is what they pay their taxes. Anything in the lease?
It's no different than vehicle, it's law, that's the law, is wherever that plane's going to sleep is where you pay, no different than your motor vehicle. Uh they're supposed to pay it, they're also supposed to disclose, they they have their tail number, they give it to the FAA and they claim it somewhere. Uh we've got a pretty good team and we we always have, a long time off. About excess tax collection, and you've got good folks that come in, they know it's due the first February, they come in and pay, and I'm still chasing people for my fear. Uh and then you've got folks that just find the right one. Some are some are great, like, hey, I'm selling my plane, I just wanted you to know, I want you to talk and build a sale. And then for some people, it's like, how long can I wait?
Seems like there's a bit of like a transparency issue too, you know, there's, you know, I heard little things like some little motorhomes or something in it, like, I mean, and and that's the kind of stuff. Like, if there's a motorhome sitting in a hangar, that means it's an airplane. That's not in there, it means that someone's not buying gas, and so when someone calls and says, are there any hangers open, can I park my airplane in there? The answer has to be no, so that, I mean, it's lost business, and if that's what we need to keep things financially going, I mean, those are the types of things that we have to be. I mean, it's in the lease, but if we're not going to hold people accountable to do the things that we're saying you have to do, I mean. Who's this really the on this on? It's kind of on us to say, all right, if we say it's airplane related, like, we can't have, you know. Your RV parked in there, we're saying that, you know, you have to do these sorts of things, that we sort of have to, someone has to hold them accountable and.
And I guess that biggest question there is who is that someone and how do we go about doing that? We don't s- uh search or inspect.
Yeah, they don't.
Anything, and I don't know. I mean, we have, we have the right and we have the obligation necessarily, is that we don't feel comfortable doing it, then you can pass DOT and then pay it. That we were talking about this this afternoon, so we're fresh on, but, you know, I sent a hanging letter after meeting the advisory. Two, three weeks ago, maybe a little more, that was one of the concerns that came out of it, so that was a reinforcement that, look, you folks need to disclose. We need to disclose your sales and all that other, but then you you need to make sure that what is in your hangar is aviation related. You're not aviation related in a car or hope you're aviation related. And it it jeopardizes our type of fun on the whole.
Yeah, uh again, and it runs into who's, I mean.
Yep.
For myself, it's definitely third party, I don't feel that we would want to do that in-house as to where we don't do any.
So we talked about.
This is going to make us feel weird to not do it.
And then I think at that point in time, but it's not like we can be in some windows today. Right, that's just, that's part of a well-rounded airport tour, um so. And so it's just like, you know, that, you know, there are people that spend time at the airport, no, and so you don't want it to be a rat system. But um, I mean, that's kind of almost what it turns into, and then we send your formal notices specifically addressed to said person. And then from that, it's going to be the king from DOT or something.
Yeah, like the third party, that way there's no hard feelings for you, the airport manager. So that is, that's a good starting point, I'd say.
Uh see you on the end.
Yes, me. On another subject, I I I think it's terrible that these people are not paying one thing, but on another subject. As far as increasing revenue. Uh we had talked about. Uh Peter uh from Origin, and he was talking about buying a new, buying a lattice. Ten thousand glass to put out at the airport, we kind of run some figures on that. If you want a new one, the excise tax on that would be thirty grand. Thirty one, thirty six, or if it's new, uh knowing Peter, uh he would probably be new and. Uh right now, the market for that aircraft he's looking at, uh is really tight. You haven't had time finding him, so he's probably have to get a new one. He'll also build a hangar and uh and then also his service would be. Based there too. And I don't know what the service was, but that's nine thousand in excise tax. Uh to me, uh if you want to increase. Uh yearly revenue. It would be, it would, that would be a solid way of doing. If we can get some more hangers built, get some more aircraft in there. And if there's empty hangers, then they need to have airplanes, because there's plenty of people want to put their airplanes in.
I agree. Somehow we have on paper, that he would probably do that at an airport.
Uh he wrote a letter to us stating he would love to do that, he he got a quote from. Sheridan for the hangar.
So where do we go to make it happen?
He wanted a new terminal building with a conference room, so he could have business meetings in the conference room. Yep, so.
These are last, I would think.
Well, yeah, he he's, he wants to be in Northwood. And my worry is, a lot of those people say, hey, we have nothing here. We'll get this big hangar and we have all these offices, we have multiple conference rooms and doing nothing but collecting dust, why don't you just move in? I. I'm just waiting for the day for that to happen. But he wants to be here, I mean, he lives in Farmington, so he's local, he feels like this is a local airport. His pilot comes here, he has his airplane based in Augusta now, but his pilot comes here. Picks him up here, picks up all the people in this company at Northwood. So he's doing his part. That's just one of the thoughts, you know, I had, I just thought, I was kind of surprised at how much money that was, so.
Right, so we changed the name for the airport, and I, I did just, it comes back to basically our long term plan. I mean, whether this town wants to have an airport or not, uh and and it's, it's it's tough. I mean, some of these sports, it's you choose whether you want it or not in your town. There are different things, but it's it's, right, for us, we have to decide whether we're going to have our airport in twenty years or we're not. Before they continue to take grants from the federal government and be on the hook for going to have that, we ever close it or shut down. If, so we really just have to look at this long term plan, whether we want an airport or not. Because no matter what we do, it's going to take time and be an investment, one way or the other. So let me clear that out for you, because we always talk about it and we never get this straight. What happens if we want to close our airport? So the cost of the government that we would have to pay is ballpark three million.
So those are good.
Cheap date, that's the, that's just to pay off the projects that we've got grant money for that we would have to pay back. All right, that's your loss, it's a three million, okay, sounds easy, no. Uh that's all they are, all land and easement acquisitions and grants would have to be reimbursed back at a hundred percent with the current fair market value. All building grants would have to be reimbursed based on remaining life. The town would be responsible for all relocation costs associated with the current hangar owners lease. Meaning that, hence that hangar, we would be responsible for the cost of picking it up and moving it wherever it wants. It can't be there anymore. The town would have to sell the property at fair market value, or the property would have to be submitted to FAA and reinvested in aviation somewhere. The town would not make any money off the sale of any airport property, the town could not just abandon the property and not sell it. Even if the town never takes another grant, you're required to keep it open as an airport in perpetuity unless you find a way to close it and sell it. All this keep, so I think. So it's always been.
I'm going, yes.
Right, yeah, so it really becomes whether we're expanding or maintaining.
I don't know, well, I think we've, I think we've done our job in in uh. Holding the hangar owners uh to the line. I mean, they won't open the doors so you can see what's inside. They need to point, they they need, it needs to be explained to them that they need to participate or the town will take some action. And uh, you know, they're going to pay their fair share.
Yeah.
And the town taxpayers should be paying, making up that money. The hangar owners out there with their airplanes should be paying.
Very short, very short period.
I mean, that's, to me, that's like, that's step one.
Yeah, sure, man, I'll address my question to you, but, okay, whatever, but is it the main thing hangs out there right now?
Absolutely. They don't last five minutes when they go up for sale. I literally, I, the one went up to sale the other day, I said, do not sell, I'll I'll give me twenty four hours. Well, it wasn't that I wanted it, I already knew two people that wanted it, they both had airplanes, so. One of them got it, so the other one is running with me, so we ended up gaining another airplane at the airport. Yeah, you can't, uh Bruce Patton, he just passed away. Uh his wife wanted to know the other day about his hangers, how how is she going to disclose to them? Those things will be sold in twenty four hours.
I didn't realize that. So if his hangar is open, I'm being used for aviation purposes, this demand for it to be used for.
Oh, yeah, there's there's a, there's a huge demand, because you cannot build hangers, you can build one in Waterville. But you can't afford to build one at Waterville. In a land rent is really, really cheap, but there are specs on their buildings is out of sight. So you really can't build there. This is been the only place that has allowed us, you know, to build, when we started out here, it was a drag, drag race track. It wasn't really an airport, uh there was one little hangar out there and a, and a. Ten by twelve white buildings that sat on the land for a terminal though, so that's all. All growing up in mostly in my time, from nothing to what we've got now. Most of it was done by the pilots, I mean, the town put in money, but the terminal building got built by the pilots. Yeah, I mean, that, the the windows, the front windows came out, Brenda's father's store. Uh everything upstairs Brenda and I bought and installed. Uh, you know, it was all, had one student that built the kitchen, all the cupboards there, Jeff Kane posted the wiring. Charlie Brown did all plumbing, you know, we did that, we did it cheap, we won't have that luxury this time, right?
Can the town not build hangers and sell them?
Uh we could have been as slow about it if there's a demand for it, but the market's natural, he had to take care of that. I, we, they're all planned out, we've done all the environmental assessments and everything else, it's just a matter of somebody coming in to do that. And we have that periodic interest uh in folks really looking to the best.
Is that, like, well, I'm just wondering if that is, like, we have money where with a rate of inflation and things like that, and we're not like making money within the bank. We did some investing, if we build buildings, like, is there opportunity for us to lease things out where they're not actually buying it? And we have a higher monthly thing, and so we basically were still holding on to a valuable asset, but we're renting it out to people, is that something for them?
Sorry, yeah.
Is that even, I'm just wondering if that legally is that allowed, and is that something that would be an investment for the town, it's obviously what you're there for because. I don't know.
That's, that's tough, I mean, like Richard had said, uh with the market mandate, they would build it. Uh from a town's perspective, they don't really buy houses and refurbish them, so I can imagine we're going to construct. Uh hangers, uh just off the top of my head, cost versus what you take that to. Uh that's probably a hundred year payback on that. Probably, the other thing to remember is what's the cost for me to get the inside of a building painted versus what a private party could do that for. When I go over a hundred thousand, you've got to bring in the engineering staff, if you want to go do it yourself. You don't need that, you can, you're cool.
Then the other thing is, and Roland didn't have the exact answer, I mean, we've got the hangar fees of forty five dollars, when was the last time those were up? I mean, like, obviously, like, everything right now, like, inflation, I mean, when was the last time there was an increase on fees?
Did that once.
Uh less than ten years ago, uh they went from thirty to forty five, yeah.
He thought it was a over ten years.
More than six and less than ten.
If you, if you're good for ones and then paying it to pay, you double your money.
Well, no, well, that's just the excise tax of the airport, that's that, I mean, everybody's paying their.
Everybody's paying the taxes, yeah.
The lease fees and taxes, yep.
So there hasn't been an increase in a significant amount of time for.
Oh, right, there's a scene, right, and it sounds like it could certainly go up.
Due for that, yeah.
So there's, right, looks like a couple of small things, but again, in terms of where we're going, our long term plan, whether we're investing or maintaining. Uh I don't know about maintenance, that needs to happen, I unfortunately didn't make the trip out. Or what the cost is of expansion.
I mean, I think in order to even entertain the idea of expansion, there has to be, you know, a business plan in place that. Shows what that business opportunity is and what the impact on global economy is, and I don't think we have any of that in place, we really don't have the manpower or. You know, anything in place to make that happen, I think that. Right now, we're in maintenance mode, fixing things that are there, we don't have any plan to bring in any sort of growth potential, like.
I mean, it sounds like this is a possibility for some growth potential.
But then you've got other people saying that they've spoken with the pilot of this company, saying that there's no intention from that company of doing that, so I mean, there's.
Something like that would take a commitment in in some fashion, uh but I mean, you can't downplay it, I mean, that's, there's some possibility. Well, that sounds, something like that would take a commitment in in some fashion, uh, but I mean, you can't downplay it, I mean, there's some possibility there. But again, it comes back to us and our long-term plan, whether we would like to maintain stuff or add to it. Uh, but I think that's what the board and the airport committee to kind of look at and make that decision based on the information we have. I don't think we're gonna do that tonight, and I think we've looked at some opportunities to, uh, help with some revenue. There's still the question of how we'll enforce that or will inspect it. We can decide that, or we can decide that right now. But I don't know what else we can do at this point in time. I don't know if anyone has any different feelings, I mean, I'm a public, I don't, I think we have a good start. And again, I think we'll all need to take a look at what we want from our airport this year and the next year now. It's not just the airport, but I mean, it's just kind of all of my stuff.
No, I think it was your presentation together, Richard.
Well, I mean, now that we've got the bones of it, we can close out 2021 and we can add in. You know, we should be able to review that we're capable of with this. Uh, certainly, but we'll resleet this and try to get the airport committee back in here for either our next meeting or the meeting after. Depending on, I know buses are coming, uh, so we'll leave that for you to decide when the best time to get them back in. And meanwhile, we can work on how we want to, uh, do the enforcement, whether we look starting with the letter and then lining up something maybe with DOT or FAA to have them inspect for us. That's where I do feel it should be their time, more or less.
Right, right. Question, but just for clarification. So pilots are are selling hangers, you know, I've got a hangar, I own it, I'm selling it, what are we getting a lease for the footprint that the hangar sits on? So we're basically leasing the space. So someone wants to tear their hangar down and build a brand new hangar out there, we don't care, we're leasing them a footprint of property for forty-five bucks a month?
Do we have any, like.
Pretty much, we do care, because we, if you rebuild, it has to look a certain way.
I understand that.
Okay, so there is that in their place now, like, there's certain, obviously, stuff this grandfather did, which is how some stuff looks, but like, anything new being built has like a certain, like, aesthetic, yeah.
Yeah, of course, everything's green, it's, yeah.
Okay, so that might impede our ability if if they own this building and we're leasing them a footprint, that's gonna maybe hinder our ability to open up for inspection or what's their lease like?
They have to.
It is, okay.
And and ultimately, if they're in violation of the lease, it would be difficult, the thing is not gonna be inspected, difficult things in being enforced on. Uh, because there are folks that have always done it this way, right, you hear that? And that is gonna be, okay, are you really willing to go to the point of saying, okay, Mr. Moore, you need to take your building and pull it out of here, your lease is void. Because he's storing non-aviation with the, I mean, that's the revenue.
So at least the value for us there is that if he's storing a Winnebago in his in his hangar, we could get another pilot that wants that hangar and they're gonna pay excise tax at Norwalk, they're gonna buy fuel in Norwalk, so that's where we're gonna benefit this increase.
And you'd have maybe a hangar owner that cared about more about the appearance of the building and whatnot rather than store it.
All right.
In a business or six months, and I mean, that was one of the things that was really noticeable for us as we walked down towards lease management, Fred wanted to man, a living in an ISO when you look back.
Cause it's it's really beautiful out there, I mean, like, the background is really great.
We actually were talking about the possibility of facade money to help improve the way that that looks.
I think that's a better use of tip money than like redoing the inside.
The greens, the green dude, the green buildings do, they look really, really nice, and they've got these wavy rooms and things like that, and I don't know what it'll cost or anything like that, but.
Or even just consistent color, like, it's all uniform.
And that's the first thing, that's the primary entry point.
So the, can you amend your lease or can you, you know, I mean, hey, you've got a year lease on this, or is it a lifetime lease, or what's the lease term where you live?
Yeah, the, the new one's a fifteen-year term.
The, you know, the other thing too, like, being inside the building, there was a lot of talk the last meeting about, you know, redoing the inside, which, I mean, obviously, is it gorgeous? No, but there was nothing structurally, I mean, it was completely cosmetic, there wasn't, I mean, anything that I could see. But anyways, like, I can see how the need of like a heat pump certainly in there for the heating and cooling, I can imagine how in the summertime that would probably become like unbearable. So I, I mean, I can't, I just think we're one upstairs, maybe even more up there, so I think that we do need to look at getting like a a split heat pump so that that can be heated and cooled in there. Um, and then we were talking also too, like, I don't know what the cost is, I don't know if it's really broken down of what the our electric bill is out there on a monthly basis, but, you know, it's so wide open there, you know, I'm sure there's, you know, an enormous upfront cost for solar panels out there, but like, you know, the typically paid for solar panels once, you know, is that maybe something we want to look at having put into as like an electricity source for the airport and have everything run off of that for that? I mean, if we look at a heat pump and, you know, the solar panels, like, is that all of a sudden, is that gonna be enough of something to put a dent in, you know, the operating costs and, you know, is that gonna put us more in the black there? I mean, seems like there's funds from other places that, you know, can be invested to make it a little bit more green, like, maybe these are the things we need to be looking at, you know, whether it's some of the fees, but maybe it's making it more, you know, eco-friendly and a little expenditure here, but long-term, it's heating and cooling it far less expensively and, you know, and if we're using tip money for facade things to make it more, you know, desirable, like, if you get a beautiful mountain backdrop and if all of there's continuity of, you know, how the buildings look, I mean, I think that's the kind of stuff that, you know, might make more people want to come in, other pilots, you know, I don't think knocking down the building, building a new one, maybe is that it now? But I think if, you know, it looks nicer from the outside, those type of things, like, I've never been against the airport, by the way, just in case everyone knows. It's it's always just been like, if we're going to invest money, like, what's the, what's the return on that investment? That's, and it's always what I've been trying to do, just make me understand, like, okay, like, I I get it, but like, it's not field of dreams, like, if you build it, they will come, it's like, no, we're gonna like, send out the flyer for what's happening, who's the band that's showing up, if you're coming for a concert, we need to know who's playing, that's kind of like where I've been at with this the whole time. You know, I, obviously, there's potential out there, but I think it has to be thought out, it has to be planned out, and it has to be done in a way that makes sense for taxpayers, that's that's all, and I do think that we need to address Roland's pick, like, I did this, after seeing the stuff that I read in the. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying, like, we need to be, like, as far as, you know, our budgets with that kind of stuff, we need to be looking at that as far as, like, operating budget for the airport, we need to be looking at um, our payroll costs for that, that's something we have to be thinking about for next year.
That's a better goal, yes.
Yeah, that definitely needs to be for the operating budget of the airport, I think.
Okay, so I hear the back there.
I just wanted to say, I don't see, it's nice to go, look nice, but I don't see how facade improvement is gonna improve the economic development of the airport.
I also don't know how a a new, like.
Oh, yeah, so. It's 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 a good idea, it's a good idea, I understand what you're saying, but we're not trying to improve or disprove someone, I mean, the facade is an option, and certainly, maybe anything look better entices me, but I understand what you're saying.
I just wanted to say.
Yes, uh, we'd really do it here, so thank you for that. Anything else from, I I don't, uh, I don't think we need a decision here, I don't think, so we're just gonna basically table this.
Yeah, this is inspirational, this is right, you guys had a good ideas to where we're where we're going, what we need to address.
Oh, oh, sorry, I was going with the, um, you know, only other thing that, um, you know, brought up. I think that there are some hangers that are hooked up to town sewer and water, but aren't kicking for, that was something else that was brought up. I don't know how that even happens, look.
The town septic.
Town septic.
And the town water, they're discharging from their hangar into the septic at the airport.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah.
Parker?
I don't know, I'm.
We don't use the original names.
I just know that it's something.
That's 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 a good, that's a good piece there that we looked at on a side piece with yourself.
Right, and the thing would be to get a master's degree. If you're on the Norwalk water, then you have access to water, you get somebody else's expense or a cost, maybe bucks a month, a quarter a month.
Yeah.
And if you have access to send it down to, what were you saying, to build for underbath before?
I didn't use my house.
Right, we're.
And then if we do a one, then we've got to go for everybody, and she thought that curious, and so it is a valid discussion.
And I would look into that.
And we have a gentleman that is doing a beautiful job upgrading a hangar, and he's a permanent holding pick, and that's his responsibility.
So I would look into what those were when the original leases were written.
And right in that fault.
And the order's gonna have to figure out how to do that. So that's a good catch, and right, we'll certainly be, but two full questions, that case, good.
And we also. And the other thing is to.
No, that's the last thing.
All right, yes, and I am gonna make even more, I mean, so, you guys are selling oil at the airport, I don't know if you guys should be selling oil inside our municipal building. Throw things at me now, but like, that kind of should be a town thing, like, that.
We'll take it offline.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so.
I bet everyone else had these questions, and they went up there for.
Hey, where was your two-minute there?
I didn't set the table for now.
All right, so so we're gonna move on from the airport, thank everybody for coming in on that, uh, so we'll move discussion action on, uh, ARPA project proposals.
All right, so we sent notice out to every board committee, department, uh, and some folks were more responsive than others. We got a very attractive packet from the fire department with public letter, price estimates, justification. And so Todd and Dave are here, maybe to present it to field of questions, they had it in there since last round. And they've got three, three projects that they like to, that they qualify, and yes, they do qualify under section of the department.
Do we look at action on this tonight or?
No, uh, I mean, ultimately, we gave a deadline, but I know the library committee's meeting again tomorrow, uh, and it's on there, it's got, uh, we've got the two phases of money, it's a hundred and seventy-four this year, a hundred and seventy-four next year. Uh, I think it's a good opportunity to start to prioritize in terms of where you see value or where you don't, uh, kind of sensitive or otherwise. And think about it, and then, you know, maybe this and conversations tonight will pique other folks' interest.
So you want to just discuss, just discuss?
Yeah, maybe with some discussion and some, uh, you know, it's some things like, nah, I don't like it, I mean, maybe it's worth giving it off the table so that folks know that you're not interested in that at all. Or like, this is a great idea and we want to see more ideas like this. And that gives folks the ideas to, we can't move on this until town meeting, so if we're at a town meeting, we're gonna ask the town to approve spending the money through the ARPA. If they don't approve it, that money has to go back to the to the state, which has to go back to the federal government.
Just leave each thing need to be listed separately in power of orders?
No, no, so no.
Okay.
And so, but what we need to do, our obligations to taxpayers and voters, is to have, here is our plan, this is what we're gonna do.
Right.
I mean, if the question doesn't come up, it should, we need to ask ourselves.
So, so you can spend beforehand?
If you wanna buy turnout gear, you can buy it. But there's not gonna be that guarantee that an account's gonna be replenished after the fact or anything like that, so I caution you. But, you know, it might be tempting at times. Wait this long.
I know, right. So we need to just have a discussion tonight and make decisions.
Yeah, if you really, really like something, then I'd let, you know, let the people know. Cause it might, Becky said I have her committee to tell them, well, in situations, and wrap her up or else, yeah. I might wanna get a little.
Yeah.
Of course. So we operated on the deadline that we were given. And then our stuff. They should give us a couple of. So, so there's a two-page, or I think you should probably have it. Um, I have extra copies if anybody wants. So we asked for three things, so when when evaluating what to ask for, we refer to this. So this is our chart, right, and you guys have seen this over and over and over of capital, now, there's all kinds of things on this chart that we purchased recently, there's things on here that we have a funding plan in place for, there's things on here that we've applied for grants for waiting to hear. So there's all kinds of moving parts and pieces. The three that are highlighted in yellow, which you might have lost on photo copy, or you didn't, okay, good, good. Items one, eleven, and sixteen are items from our capital list that we felt qualified. Didn't have a funding plan in place. And that you would ask me for those parts. So there are some other things there, you'll see them from the comment section, different things that are ongoing. We've applied for Stephen and Tabitha King, we were reapplying for the AFG grant, there's just a number of ongoing things. These three items qualified and we didn't have a funding plan in place for them, so that's why the three that are on the sheet, that's why those three.
Were these the only three that qualified?
The only three that we thought were qualified, there's only really a couple of three items left. Um, things like boat and four-wheeler replacement, stuff like that, and we just couldn't make that stretch, right, we couldn't make that stretch. So that's why these three, so we're going to go with the.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first one, and it's always number one on our capital list for a reason, right? Effective PPE turnout gear for firefighters, that's the number one thing we can do to keep people safe, is having the right current modern gear. Number one, it's always gonna be at the top of our capital list, it's at the top of this list as well. So getting them, everybody in some, uh, new modern turnout gear and does a few things. Does the obvious, um, and and put you in a new set of turnout gear, which is made to the current standards, and that's great. It gives you, by virtue of taking the set of gear that you have, it's still compliant, maybe, not as good, but still compliant, use that as a backup set of gear, right, for quicker turnaround, back-to-back calls, things like that. The newer gear is is, you know, much lighter and it breathes better, it's, this is a ton of advantages to the to the newer stuff. And, you know, we're always looking to fund turnout gear every year. A lot of years we don't, why is that? It's not really a capital purchase when you're looking at one or two sets of turnout gear, so we never do it in the middle of the year or on capital funds. It's not really a good maintenance number either, five, seven thousand dollars, so we wait, we wait till the end of the year, see if we have any money left. And invariably, we have enough left, people say, here, get some money left, we'll try to buy a set or two. Ordering gear takes, uh, if you recall this, it takes months to get a custom, it's really custom every time you order, a custom set of turnout gear. It takes months, so then the bill comes in July, and you really want to spend the money in the previous fiscal, and he is mad, and it's it's painful. What we're trying to do here by buying everybody new gear is to get into a stock program. So this is a distributor in New Hampshire, it's Bergeron, it's the same outfit that you saw at the fire station. They sell Globe Gear, manufactured in New Hampshire, Globe Boots, manufactured in Auburn, Maine. So they took an old shoe shop in Auburn, by the way, and Globe makes their fire boots there now, so that's really, you know, support local. But doing that and and getting into a stock program so that Matt joins the fire department and we can make a phone call in a week or so, have him a a full set of gear. Or if he hurts them, destroys them, I mean, that happens. You know, getting into a stock program, the pre-negotiated pricing, it's rural fire departments, it's it's a it's a middle-of-the-road gear standard for rural fire departments, and that's why Globe is, or Bergeron is assigned to stock it. I will caution you on the spend money now, spend money after town meeting thing. There is an eight percent price increase coming January first on the Globe Gear. So I mean, that's an opportunity to save a couple hundred bucks a firefighter, it's not chump change. But I can understand why they'll wait too, so, not my decision, but it is my duty to tell you that that's coming. The sixty-nine thousand we're asking for is if the price goes into effect and we don't purchase until, say, February or something, you could save a little bit of money off that. The boots.
Is sixty-nine thousand, is, would be eight percent?
The sixty-nine thousand is worst case, if we we can take eight, can't take eight percent off the total, because the gloves and the boots is is different, but you could save a chunk of money, a odd from the sixty-nine thousand's worst case if you have to pay.
Is that a cool, a burnable for the doctor, that's.
That's all included, you will feel some math. You get my math?
Yeah.
So, I'm like, on the line, I have, you were looking at the virtual, I'm guessing it just provided so that it was my, well, it was two sets for each one and each year, so this would cover like everyone in like.
Everybody in one color suit, you won't see us back here looking for gear money for a while. And then, so somebody says, well, wait a minute, if you buy everybody here now, it's all gonna wear out sometime, ten years from now, you're gonna be back here looking for eighty thousand. That is, it doesn't happen in the fire service. Matt's gear wears out differently than my gear, wears out differently than somebody else. Matt's gear wears out differently than my gear, wears out differently than somebody else's. There are people come to different amounts of calls, there are people that don't go interior structural, there's, it just, it all wears out.
It's like everyone has.
Even if we buy it all new now, we might still need to buy a couple of replacement sets in a few years, but we won't need to buy them all.
Okay, so it's not like, you know.
They will wear at very different rates.
Okay.
Depending on how old the firefighter is, what that firefighter does, how often they go to calls.
And this is all.
Does he operate the truck or does he go in a burning building? This is, I'm sorry.
It's all seems like, you know, like stuff you have in the winter time or summer time.
You also can get into different gears and structural in the wildland firefighting. And we are putting in for the main forestry grant this year for wildland year. So that main forestry has a grant that we get almost every year.
We've never got refused.
Never got refused. Maybe fifty percent and we're getting, yeah, okay. Uh, but we'll put in for new coats and helmets for that. Cause you can't wear your structural gear out in the woods, first of all, you probably ruin it. And it's just too, too heavy, too hot to work in all these things. So, so that's proposal number one is that. Um, it's, it's a great opportunity for us to put everybody in new stuff and allow them to get back stuff. And I, if you read the paragraph, I think it, it says it all much more concisely than I just did. Second.
That's priority one.
That is priority one. Second thing that's on there is an automated hose washer. So right now, we wash our hose with this, with water spray. I like to call it high pressure, but it's not even that, it's just connected to the town water supply. It's in a trench, we run the hose through it, it's a, it's a tube and it has jets and it just kinda rinses the hose. Well, that's great until you get a hose that's contaminated with a bunch of carcinogens and pathogens. Blood and, you know, I'm sorry, but, I mean, we grow up, but anything ends up on the hose. From, you know, burning buildings of black stuff, that's cancer causing. But the, the carcinogens after a car accident like we had downtown recently, I mean, that's disease spreading and all these things. So you have to wash your hose. Well, you can buy for about fourteen thousand dollars an automated hose wash system. It's a, it's a machine, you put your roll hose in it, it has a bunch of scrubbers, soap injector, there's high, there's a pressure, high pressure pump in there, so it sprays it. Cleans it, squeegees it, rolls it back up, you set it off to dry, so that's number two.
Well, this is like outside of the hose, like.
Correct. It's essentially what are you dragging that hose through?
All right, okay.
And you obviously don't have a lot of control. You deal with, now, there's been many times, many times, where we discarded hose or abandoned hose in place. After a particularly bad event, so what does that mean if you buy the hose?
On the side of our hoses.
Yeah. Oh, one fifty foot length is about three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So, so, so a fire truck has thousands and thousands of dollars of hose on it. So anyway, that's request number two. Any other questions that you need to pack along?
Just wondering, like, how many girl, right, like, the wiki ones?
We, some of it's, some of it's, some of it's middle of the road, it gets washed and we do the best we can, sometimes it gets washed twice.
Yeah.
Is what it is. The third request on there is for, um, our fire department repeater, radio repeater. So you heard our pages go off annoyingly at the beginning of the meeting. Every piece of communication goes through that repeater. That repeater was installed in October two thousand and five, and it was a MEMA grant, actually, main emergency management grant. I think we paid five percent or maybe less than that, was largely paid for by others. It was installed in oh-five, it's now sixteen years old. It, it operates so far, knock on wood. Um, it's subjected to a lot of power blips and brownouts and everything that all the rest of us are at our homes, right? And it's lasted, and thank goodness it has, we rely on it every day. Um, this past summer, we had to replace the antenna, you might have seen Richard put it on Facebook. We had to replace the antenna due to age, so we had to have somebody climb the twenty-foot tower and replace the antenna. Um, that wasn't that expensive, maybe twenty-five hundred bucks or so, probably haven't even built yet.
Uh, no, no one has that.
No one does, you know? Uh, so to replace the electronics does a couple of things. It gets us into a new repeater when, and gives us another ten, fifteen, twenty years. Um, it allows us to take the current one that's still operating and put it on the shelf and use it as a spare, get it away from the possibility of getting hit by lightning and all those things, and put it on the shelf and call it a spare. And then, third, on the capital list, the very next to the bottom one, item sixteen, is develop a radio communications power site sometime in the future. I would like to see a town on site to take care of all of our communications, public works, sewer, maybe water, um, but fire, of course. Someday. Well, this would be a step towards that, where we could buy the repeater equipment now. Um, replace what's there and aging and could fail tomorrow. And that certainly gets, can be completely reusable with a new site. So it's kinda taking, if you look at that item number sixteen, and it says sixty thousand, and by the time you get there, probably a hundred. But it takes a chunk out of that.
So, that's definitely my question, so you're in there on that, and it's fifteen here.
Right, wow, we're, we're, this one, developing a site, you know, you're talking about buying a building, putting up an antenna.
We've only got yellowed out, part of that project.
Part of that. Part, yes, thank you, part of that project. Um, do it now, it's fifteen-year-old electronics, how much fifteen-year-old electronics do you still have? Anybody can answer that question, please. Only a fifteen-year-old piece of electronics that you rely on daily, do you still operate at home?
No.
How many?
No.
Are you so added together, I've got, we add them up, right? It's nine. So, I mean, it is something that we should consider doing. So that's the three items that we've asked for.
That the door was ninety.
I think that adds up to ninety-eight thousand. Yeah, yeah. Now, all of those things could show up again next year if you say no this year, right? There are all still needs. Um, now, another thing, while I get the floor a little bit, um, look at the grayed up box on the capital list. So we applied a hundred and seventy-five thousand on a grant for new air packs, right, this year. We didn't get it early, it was actually the federal government's twenty-twenty AFG program, which only the federal government could do this in twenty-twenty-one, but that's what it was, COVID slowed it down or, or delayed it. We did not get that grant. We desperately need those air packs and, and the ones we have are gonna be out of compliance in a couple of years. If we don't get, we're gonna reapply the twenty-twenty-two program, twenty-twenty-one program is actually open now. Twenty-twenty-one, so the big end of the right year this time. So there's been two in this fiscal calendar year. Um, we're reapplying for the hundred and seventy, we know what did wrong, really wasn't us, but we know what happened. We're gonna try and correct it and resubmit, and we're hoping to get that, that's got an eighty, eight or nine thousand dollar match. If we don't get that a second time, we're probably not gonna apply again. And we might be back here in a year saying, you know, you're getting a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the fence in fiscal year twenty-two. We have a hundred and seventy thousand dollar project that's coming, right? So we might be here asking for the whole map next time around. Or contingency, or.
Right, we're gonna get that.
That's true all the time, that's all that I like. But, um. We may be here asking for the whole thing next, next year.
No, it makes sense.
We don't know.
No, it makes sense to me.
Any questions?
Okay, so last item on our list is to with your new tanker in thirty, thirty-one. The price will probably be more than a hundred thousand.
Totally.
And it will be a spacecraft model of some.
There's a couple above that, Jim, honestly, it comes first, we gotta replace another engine. So in the next forty to this, in the next five years or so, we've got two of us.
Change that from twenty, from thirty, thirty-one to twenty, thirty-one, and then we'll look at it.
Oh, thirty, thirty-one? Well, it's a long-term plan. It's like a table, I mean.
That's okay.
Thank you for telling me.
Of course. You're planning on us not buying that for our teams?
We'll need, we'll need about four or five. Can't believe I'm gonna tell you both.
Well, I'm glad that you brought these in for us. Look at a review after listening to you, uh, I mean, I'm on fire department as well, so I'm a little biased there. A lot, but a little, uh, the gear and the time and the eight percent. Uh, I do think that's worth backing on, uh, there's multiple ways, uh, that it can be paid for, whether it's approved later or we use your money or some other money. Right now, uh, I would just like to see that move. That way you actually see those, I mean, if you order right now, what are you gonna see?
Well, let me, let me, thank you for asking that, cause I forgot something. We are buying, we're, I say buying, that's probably, we're signing up for a stock program, cause we think it's the right thing to do. It's a stock program under development and the stuff isn't on the shelf yet. In fact, and actually it is if you buy gold, but we buy black. So they, they're adding the black to their inventory. So this first purchase, it'll be three or four months before we actually get it. Succeeding purchases, once it's on the shelf, won't be, but it's a brand-new stock program, so I'm just wondering.
Right, that's where we're moving now, is ordering paper and get it before the price changes.
There's, there's a lot of reasons to do that.
Yeah, 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 I have to.
With, with very, with little risk, but I'll point to Richard, I mean, I think he laid it out there, I mean, there is a risk. It's not like we don't need it, right, but.
It's not like it's like a point oh eight percent increases eighty percent, you need stuff that.
It's about, it's about a four to five thousand dollar savings, which, you know, that's not small changes, I know it's not technically like our money. It's from the feds, but it's, you can't ignore it.
So we have two more minutes before the end of the year. Uh, this is the very first proposal, the very first proposal, uh, proposal of ideas, uh, as a courtesy of a proposal myself included, probably best to table. This decision until the next meeting, which is, you know, two weeks away, it's the first day of December. Um, and then if you've decided that's so attractive, then we can make that decision, I think in the interest of folks that can submit, um, proposals, hold it until December, and then you get to go through everybody's, um, before you do that.
But then there's the go first, go strong theory, right? I understand, I wanna be fair to everybody. I mean, we could have asked for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we might next year, but, um.
Sounds like you got it.
Right. The other, the other opportunity, and I think Matt was going down this road, is to approve the gear and then wait on the other two.
Oh, I think we're definitely gonna wait on the other two, uh, here regardless, and we'll leave that, but, uh, if, if we approve the gear the first of December, yeah.
We've still got time to write a purchase order, right? I mean, it's January first.
So we still have to take it in the year.
We still have time, long as we can keep her.
And you can get an exact on the numbers and how many sets you're buying and all that, and you can potentially look sharper this time you come in.
No, it's gonna be sixty-nine thousand, okay?
It'll be up to, right, there's twenty sets a year's up.
Be twenty, yeah. How many?
Plan on going with one?
I'm sorry?
How many firefighter ones do you have in the?
Firefighter one?
Everyone?
Well, some of them, and I think I'd include myself in this, didn't make it all the way through firefighter one. We stopped at the, what they call it, Bureau of Labor Standards minimal.
Right.
Um, so there's, it's kind of a subset of firefighter one.
Right.
So there's a few like that, a majority of firefighter ones, we have several firefighter twos.
So.
Eight.
Here's another question that I wonder, do you think you're gonna get influx with, I know Scott Keegan now is requiring their firefighters to get vaccinated? Are you gonna get, I mean, hopefully more, are you planning on getting more people since they're leaving some places as we're not requiring them right now, I think?
We may or may not have been recruiting in that area.
Well, I think that's obviously a smart thing, but that's obviously going to affect these numbers, cause they're gonna need help.
One that works for you.
They're not outfits, it's protective equipment, so.
One that works for you, can we get a commitment that he can leave work?
If I had any power to make him do anything, so to speak, that I have a horse trailer that my life's been interesting now.
We have been talking, we have been talking.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think this is like one of those like perfect opportunities, but like, I think that we need to look at your number with a bit of the last two city, um, to account for things like that. I think you should be recruiting, right?
We may, we may only need nineteen, but the number changes a little bit, you're, you know, um.
So we will, we'll let everything come in and we'll look at it at our next meeting and regardless of this plan.
I, I would ask not to wait beyond that if you could, just.
I don't think there'll be any.
Consideration of, yeah.
Give everybody a bit more time to get in than you were.
I think that makes it more fair.
We do appreciate you being, yeah, being on the spot, but getting it.
It really depends on, you know, other requests you get too, I mean, we got no idea of what these other other things that qualify. I, yeah, we sit here and tell you how important our stuff is, that does not mean that somebody else doesn't have one that's equal or more, I.
Right, no, I mean, everybody, we listen to everything and then, yeah, hopefully, make the fun of everything. Okay, excellent, thank you guys. All right, we'll move into other business.
Start again.
Oh, all right, so I'm gonna wrap up the town submissions that were submitted on time. Uh, I have just three items, two on behalf of, uh, the town in general, uh, and then one on behalf of library trustees, which is still in its infant phase, it's just because of a lack or an inability to get a price estimate, uh, but I wanted to get that into you because they did decide that it was me. So my first item is a premium pay for public sector employees, uh, these are for folks that were employed prior to, uh, the start of the pandemic and are still employed, uh, by the town. Uh, the stick-to-it-iveness, uh, of those employees, for virtually all of our employees, they could have made more times throughout uh, the pandemic by taking that appointment, uh, and the incentives. Uh, so I think it reasonable to, uh, consider paying a full-time employee one thousand dollar incentive. Uh, my pricing proposal includes, uh, the cost of payroll taxes as well as offering those employees the opportunity to submit the six percent matched to retirement, uh, is a continued good gesture, uh, for savings. Uh, the proposal also includes firefighters, our call firefighters, uh, the process of coming in with that was a little difficult, uh, but I looked at the last two full payrolls representing twelve months. Um, and added up the maximum number of calls that were responded to by our volunteer on-call firefighters. Uh, that number was one forty-nine, we had two firefighters that did attain that level. So for the purposes of estimating, that is what I equated to a full-time town employee, somebody that shows up to the maximum number of calls, not all calls, but the maximum number of calls, and then I appropriated that out to the rest of those firefighters. Uh, I did not exclude any firefighters based upon a start or an end date. If they reported in that payroll and go, but they still workforce, whether it came in late, I added them. They're our first responders and I wouldn't go, you know, some are gonna be small checks, some are maybe five dollar checks. Uh, but to me, it was like, we're not gonna piece them all together. Um, so that's my proposal, they have the cost, in order to do that, townwide would be twenty thousand, eight, twenty-four and change. Uh, the second would be the, um, purchase of an enclosed cargo trailer, but present time, no department, no vehicle provides for a close transportation. So whether that would be, uh, hauling food from Camden School, uh, or from Scott Reagan Tech Center, uh, to the church for a pop-up meal program, uh, any sort of transportation to emerge the long-term scene, uh, shelter potential or other uses for a town. Uh, this is something that would meet a need that we have, that would fall into, uh, really the congregate settings and other public health services section of it. Uh, the trailer estimate, I just did a quick shop around online, I didn't ask for the municipal discount. Uh, that estimate was eighty-three hundred, and naturally we would want graphics that we represent, it was owned by the town for budgetary request of eighty-six hundred. And the final, uh, item that I have on behalf of the board of library trustees, uh, in the prevention of congregate settings and healthy childhood environments, uh, is the construction of an outdoor picnic pavilion on the property that's shared with the athletic fields, that ideally housed multiple picnic tables. It could provide for outdoor classroom, uh, for the library, outdoor presentation space, and then it could also, uh, support, um, learning options, activities, uh, when folks are there for, for rec, you might have one kid that's playing ball, and one kid that needs to do the homework, that could be the space. The primary purpose of this would be to support library events. If there was gonna be another organized use, it would be done through the library, um, in order to do that. I've submitted the request, the design, the layout of it, um, to Hammond, and they just haven't got, um, that completed price list, it's been a little over. Two hammonds and they just haven't got that completed price list, it's been a little over a week. But it's just with the timing of it all and the need to get, I had to find designs in order to skewer it into the ground for their liability perspective in order to issue me the, the estimate, so that was what the delay was. But the, the library trustees were supportive of that idea, so I submit the request without a formal price at this point. My next meeting. It's tough, it's tough, right, and then I'll definitely address it, so.
You know, how many picnic tables, I can get it on it there or is it?
I mean, it's twenty by thirty, it's just next, it's more than one is what we want and more the potential that, you know, it could all, it's gonna be a conversion space, so we can put folding tables up there. If there was a chalant, we could do that outside, we wanna art some crafts.
Power lights or?
No.
No, is that something that is against it or is it something that should be looking at?
Uh, no, it's not gonna be necessarily cheaper structure to put up. So you could easily run that off, but it would all come at incremental costs, I think that if, if that was something that we wanted, it would be something that maybe we could add in after the fact.
I'm just thinking only because it is gonna be a cost that cameras probably just because of the panels that we're seeing in like snack shack, this is gonna be something they're probably gonna wanna look at having out there, just the panels that we're seeing just on the rec structures. Something that's gonna be nice like that, we wanna be able to keep an eyeball on it, so we're gonna have to have a power out there, obviously they, you know, the start of construction, we wanna be looking at something like.
Yeah, we do have interior and exterior cameras in the library and that'd be something that down the line we look to upgrade, that's we, you know, look for the best, the rec building to cover. Bad engaged and then this addition, and if we put furniture out there and other things, we wanna make sure protecting the investment.
Are we looking at access, how it's like as far as handicap accessibility, because I know that's been an issue with like ball fields.
For.
Getting to it.
Uh, so the, the handicap accessible way to get to the ball fields technically is to go down.
The park, you wanna come up.
It's down to the ramp and down towards the basketball side of library.
Come around the side, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so that's what I have, I take any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question on the calculation for the premium pay for public employees. If you've got a, a town employee that worked in excess of two thousand hours. That's gonna qualify them under this plan for a thousand dollar incentive. And then if you look at a call firefighter that responded to a hundred and forty nine calls, is the same, is that the same thing that qualifies by that thousand dollar incentive?
The one hundred and forty nine call attendance is the thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's what I equated loosely to the full time.
So the, the only issue I have with that, if you've got a, a town employee that's working over two thousand hours full time, what would that hundred and forty nine calls, to me that seems a little unequal as far as balance?
Uh, it, it does. On the surface.
Okay.
But what we asked our firefighters to do in the time was not what I asked any other employee in the town to do. They were subjected to things that nobody else was in times like, you know, if you go in and you do CPR on somebody with, in a COVID environment and, and you know it's risk, and candidly, the number of calls that are at that one forty nine that it phases off, there are gonna be folks that are gonna get twenty dollar checks. But I think that the risk that they were exposed to, I almost even set them off into another category and added one. Not that we don't appreciate our employees, but that it's a different level of risk that those folks were experiencing.
Yeah, I understand, thank you.
And they don't necessarily have this one in five grand window, but I didn't feel right enough to do it, so.
That's fine, I think we can continue the discussion on that, that's, that's excellent.
It's all on workable spreadsheet, so if you decide you want to. The, the five grand is up there. Okay, so those are the town ones as. Yeah, those are the town ones, as a result of sending this out to board and committees. Becky is here, who's the chair of our library board and also serves in thirteen other capacities throughout the town. And she had to think creatively and she was looking at what qualifies and what qualifies our nonprofit organizations that may have suffered loss. So she has submitted the proposal to you folks for consideration, and I said that earlier in the day. We didn't wanna just be blindsided, but sure Becky was willing to talk to about proposal. But this is on behalf of the Grange.
Can I say something? It is sent from the Grange and I default the treasure of the Grange. I think you have to think of this proposal the way I think of it is, we're talking historic landmark in the town of North Walker, talking revitalization, the appearance of the town, having a charming New England town. It's all about, you know, it's all part, I think, improving Main Street. And it's the historical building, Grange happens to be the owner of it. But it's also used widely by the community, I mentioned in the letters. The Grange, people use that parking lot like it's a municipal lot. They do a lot of damage to it, we have heavy equipment come and go, we have people leave their trucks there. All weekend, we have people unload backhoes, I don't even know the name of the equipment, so it's so big, they think nothing of taking half the dirt out with them when they leave. We've hosted Chalantki, we've had elections. We have plants up for the V I, all kinds of things going on over there, we have not charged anybody one penny for anything, the town has not given us one penny for anything, you know, monetary, we have not had handouts of money from anybody, only if somebody messes it to have a tag sale. They pay twenty dollars and they can take over the whole lot, we don't have any income. And the only income we had was from public suppers, the last public supper we had was in October of two thousand and nineteen. It's been two years. So we're without income and now we have a serious problem on. I'll also say hardly because by that somebody doesn't say, why don't you fix the Grange or I'll give you money to fix the Grange or people wanna donate, well, we have a serious situation over there now with the top floor, Matt's been up there before too. His deteriorate pointed their holes and I walked around with that. See all these little faces of squirrels, I mean, they're holes, they can get in, we have some bats. And there's water could get in and before the winter goes, we really have to sew up all those holes, fix the eaves, and they're gonna fix it so like I said, the letter, it's payable on the outside, so once we get that fixed, we can start doing restoration of the outside. But this more or less in my mind kind of saves the building. Because it's kind of like what happened to Christmas tree acres, they didn't take care of it and it just you know, deteriorates, it's in very bad shape. And we need to go after grants and, and this one came up, I'm just starting to look at where you supply the money.
So does this, is this starting to get painted or is it just still like?
All this, we have two requests in there, one is for seventeen thousand, so change. That is totally to take care of the eaves and the problems on the roof that are allowing water, squirrels, bats, whatever to get in. And when we take out the ceiling, like attic. So inside there's some demolition, but outside it's really sealing it up. So tighten up the building and save it that way. And then it'll be red, it'll be payable. We can't afford to paint it, we're paying seventeen thousand dollars, plus we've got some wood rep, you know, we've got a lot of things we have to do on the outside to fix it. This is the first step and the first time, I think the last time it was done was the summer you saw me out there scraping, painting the front door, I mean, we need to take care of the building or we lose it. And it is on the National Register, I think it's very important. The other money that we're asking for is, I think it's thirty one or thirty two hundred. We've had all that, three days to work on this. And that's for redoing the parking lot. And we initially, and I talked to Richard about having asphalt put in, put in. And I talked to people on the National Register in Washington DC, I talked to expert preservationists in Philadelphia. And I talked to the paving guys here and historically, we might be impacted on grants that we try to get if we asphalt that parking lot, it's gonna look awful with it. Building, built in eighteen sixty five that has black asphalt caught up the muzzu. So the recommendation is gravel, I did look into, could you tint the asphalt, could you tint the sealwork, could you paint the asphalt? Apparently you could do that in Florida and you can do it in Texas, but it's not done in Maine. So asphalt is really, that, that would have been eleven thousand dollars, so it's doing the driveways really it's not a huge expense, it's just another step toward making Main Street a little bit better, and I also think that kind of use that we get it there. We should never repair. Years ago. A hundred years ago. There was a fence around the, the Grange and it looked like, almost like a little park setting. A nice fence, a little landscaping, it's really an attraction and that's where we need to go with this, and people go through town and look, wow, there's you know, an important building, not just a you know, a middle class town that's lost all, lost character or whatever, we're keeping it up and making it look like.
Hey, I had folks on what if it was to be renovated? Once the backs up, any ballpark, maybe it will.
No, we haven't. Grange is not a wealthy place, we haven't had any income for two years. Haven't had anybody give us huge, special money. So, you know, we make it for the suppers and we need, we'll make it from going after grants. The only grant oddly that we went after a few years ago was to get solar panels on there. And we just found there was so much other things we had to do, preparation, something like that. We have not tried. And this problem that we now have that is so affecting the building is making us, okay. We gotta do it. So I do it more as next door neighbor than historical society. I tell the Grange that, Kim knows that. But we need to keep it going.
Thank you for the couple of questions.
Yeah, we'll.
So Becky, is that? That's just the roof structure, because I know the windows need to be replaced, I'd love to see the vinyl siding on and put real wood siding, like see the handicap ramp out front, but the real entrance into a building instead of a cabbage on handicap ramp, there's a million things.
Well, before we had trouble with the roof, we were thinking about doing it two windows at a time.
Right.
And getting people to contribute. You wanna donate to the Grange, buy a window or, you know, do things like that, in fact, sadly I was talking to Alvis who's mentioned to do the windows. We never got unfortunately to complete that discussion, but I put in mind, two by two getting windows done would be a great thing, do fundraisers kind of the way the United Way does it, we have the monitor out there and this is our goal, we need to raise this much money, I mean, we'd love to have a hundred seventy thousand next year. And all for aside.
May folks smile on that one.
But we're just starting and it's, it's a long process, but this is a good wake up call that was needed for a long time.
So this year and then windows next year, right? Let's stay there.
Yeah.
If there's any money available.
Oh, there won't be.
Yeah, I've already had somebody right across the street, Russell Winwright stepped up, I took him on a tour of the building. I ended with the bulkhead and it was all about this big bulkhead going into the cellar. And he's not, he fixed that and he came over with all his backhoe and cement and everything, he fixed it. He then said, what do you want me to do now? And he sealed up at least for the winter all basement windows. So he's got people helping us too, which is great, they are not in the Grange. But we need to make it a community project.
But they should be in Grange.
Right. And okay, we are paying, we're, it's seventeen thousand, we're paying, we're going ahead with it, because you cannot go through the winter without it, it just, that's really depleting us, that's why we're not gonna be painting right away.
You, you, you mentioned the people that wanna give. What if you set up a matching type program with ARPA funds, if you think that would fly? You, you give five hundred dollars as a, you know, Dave Jones gives five hundred dollars and the town kicks in a thousand or five hundred or whatever. As an incentive to get those people.
That is an opportunity probably more for TIP.
I was just gonna say, if that comes as like.
Because it does allow for grants, the TIP allows for the formation of grant programs, which is the facade improvement is one, but it doesn't, that facade improvement doesn't allow for the extension to the Grange is a nonprofit, but if the Grange is a community building or an apartment ride, or things like that. It's all about, you know, how you package the act, that's when we're, this is the name of the game with the ARPA funds, and that's gonna be the name of the game for, you know, trying to work with the Grange to accomplish something like that with say TIP funds. The visibility, it's easy as laying a light building, so how do you make that happen? And I think that she's, she's got it right, like you've got potential for a beautiful building, you get it's one of the force maintained just because of the lack of funding, that's right at the head of Main Street, to have that there is your centerpiece, maybe it's still on time, say. So, you know, we can be a part of that, just not of how you package that.
Excellent, nice to see cobblestones that have.
Yeah, no, there's certainly opportunity for that, so I, I don't like that, yeah. Well, certainly, or options with that. Yeah.
I was honestly, I called today to get, it's one of them for Charlotte, so I was thinking with the the church today, but honestly, like it sounds so random, but like, I've got a group of like twenty girls that have all been having like this special like a fourth because it's a group of like forty year old women, they just wanna bingo bingo. I feel like the Grange should be, that could be a good name, like, bunch of girls wanna play bingo, that could be a huge fundraiser, I don't like. Yeah, we're changing. He's not afraid, he can pay it because the whole. Mama needs some windows.
Good, thank you. Uh, right, that's all, I'm not missing any.
So, I have one thing, for the next meeting, can you put these all on one? I just don't wanna start approving stuff and then find out, there are a lot of, because spreadsheet, list them all.
I agree with that. You're just, you're just don't have it, well, it's a matter of tracking what I have for submissions and then what's left for money.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
What's it got, November submissions?
Uh, November tenth.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, and so my hope is that, you know, the discussion we get here gets out and about, and if other folks have different things that they wanna propose that they would get that to us, you have different ideas that you would like to propose at the next meeting, get that to me so that we.
Oh, do you want ours in like formal writing, not just like?
No, I mean, but it needs to be presented so that we can affix a number to it, so that when it comes to prioritizing, you might come in with a five thousand dollar act, well, it might be a low priority, but that five thousand can it's because it's a small ask that we.
So the deadline is November tenth, but we're still gonna take a minute, so.
Yeah.
Who's to talk to the rec department right now?
Yeah, so we need bleachers, that's the big thing, so we look at future and that's.
So the rec department is gonna have, yeah.
Well, we had it like our, we had bleachers and I think for like forever and that was.
No, no.
The rec department needs to have, but it's probably getting the industry, so maybe something come out of that. Some of the things we discussed.
Meeting's supposed to go on the books, but like it just, it took hours.
So I'll send a reminder out to everybody again. Um, and some of the items that we've already discussed in previous meetings, you want those rec acts? Like, you know, and employee to do on, Joe, or you said. So that's gonna be that budget. Yeah.
We talked about video surveillance, is that what, we talked about?
Uh, the surveillance one would be tough. But we do have the thousand dollars that are improved, and I've talked to Edwards, and they're actually working with sheriff department to see what they would like to see for equipment, but there's some about notice in terms of being able to feedback.
So I mean, I would take, I mean, like that, Jim, I mean, it's all rigid. Famous, have any ideas, it's all rigid, you can't let.
I think we've talked about most of them, like our last meeting, we had a very decent discussion.
Seems like we've all kind of been sort of like on the same page as far as like we need to establish a food pantry and have something that's, you know, kind of all the time, like are we still being like at the fire department, that's like kind of the most makes more sense to do it there, because there's from like a staffing standpoint, just so people have access to it sort of thing, or.
Yeah, so that's the consensus of the board. Doesn't have a support of the fire department. Uh, my hope is that candidly, that maybe we can partner with the Grange or something to that effect. And that's not with the blessing of the Grange or anything. Uh, but that's not an item for us to do that, there are other.
Andrew, is it an emergency service?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah. There are other, there are other developments that are kind of in the works that might now present an opportunity, I know Matt is passionate about having, even if it's multi-community, having it here in Norwood. So as, we're working on it and maybe when it comes time for budget, we allocate a sum of money to a reserve account, which we have. But allocate a bigger sum to that, we're working with Laura Pimeo and some of the public health, and the shepherd on a regional program. It might not be going in the exact direction that we want, but let's let that play out because it's a good pool of money for grant funding on that, and I've been active in that committee as well, so. And if we were to do something for just our town, it would be smaller, if it was a multi-town, it would be, so space would be, uh you have to debate, we have multiple sites in town that have potential. Right, and the number of central sites is growing. As well as potential for donating at land ports, so it's, really we have a lot of.
I just, I feel like this is an opportunity to get like a, a good twofer, like, I love a good BOGO, so I mean, if like there's funds here that, you know, we can make it work for something else, you know, like if, I thought it was a great opportunity for the fire department, just because one, we didn't have to worry about like staffing, I mean, two, because there was artists one there, and then two, it's like we were having like cash issues, and so if we could tie some of that cost into that, but now we've got the Grange here, I have no idea what their acceptiveness is to there, but like, you know, if there was any ability to do something like that.
There are a lot of ideas that are flowing.
Right.
In all the law. Bring that up in the next meeting. Bring that up to the next meeting when we start talking about budgets.
I guess I never used to approach the Grange either.
Well, I mentioned it to you the other day as a possibility down the line, but in my mind. It's, you know, we have to be thinking about those ideas and opportunities to partner with organizations that might be struggling if. If that was something that was receptive by any given organization. Grange or otherwise. You know, a potential revenue stream where we can then support it where we otherwise think might not be able to.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we couldn't afford a fire building. Fire mountain, memorial, they couldn't afford the building. Well, maybe the potential revenue associated with the food pantry might then make it more attractive. Uh, maybe not, but those are the kind of things that we have to look at. Any other ideas to imagine? Any budget ideas to imagine? Other business?
I just have one which would be to add donations to agenda, please.
Second.
Hold on a second. All in a favor?
Uh, we have received our monthly contribution from Joseph and Leon Laporia in the amount of one hundred dollars to support community food access.
And when do we accept that donation?
One second, second. Any further discussion? All those okay?
That's all.
Okay. Anybody else?
Have we sent them a letter yet?
I sent them a letter. No, I sent a tax receipt. I sent a, you know, and I had written on. Uh, when he comes into executive session.
Uh, right. For real estate acquisition or economic development.
I don't know whether I missed anything, but is there a quick link, Dave, that needs to get added?
No.
Okay. So I don't have to sign that tonight.
No, I have changed it.
All right. I'm good then. Perfect.
Uh, we'll go into executive session.
I'll make a motion for an executive session. Chris will do one in the first day.
Yes, it's everybody.
So, as a result of this evening's disposal panel on real estate.
22 months.
Matt 32 lost 46. We have sent the quitclaim deed to the attorney for review. The prospective bonders, Joseph Raymond and Natasha Raymond have paid the $623.20 which includes the $600 price from the parcel, the $21 registry fee, the $2.20 transfer tax. If it is the pleasure of the board, we will entertain the motion to sign the quitclaim deed for Matt 32 lost 46. Natasha M. Raymond and Joseph P. Raymond, the total sales price in the amount of $600.
Sell out.
Motion second, all is in favor.